I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to order. We will begin with our invocation. Auditor Victor Hurlberg will lead us in that. So when you're prepared, please proceed, Mr. Auditor.
Good evening. If everyone could join us in prayer. Thank you. Lord, we thank you for gathering us here tonight. We thank you for freedom of religion, Lord, to worship as we see fit. We thank you for education, Lord, the ability to better ourselves, to pursue learning. And we thank you for athletics, the ability to use what we've been blessed from you, Lord, to pursue that on the football field and athletics. Lord, we pray for guidance for this commission, this county, as we pursue 2024 and close 2023. We pray for the young men who are state football champions and for their futures, whether that's in football, beyond football. And, Lord, we just ask all these things in your son's name. It's his birthday, and Jesus Christ, in his name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the
............................................................................................................
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
That brings us to the next item under our agenda that is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Wagner.
I think you move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion's been proved, been moved for the approval of this evening's agenda. I do have one change that I would like to propose, and that is that we delete, I believe it is 2023-382. Is that correct, Administrator? And that will be addressed at some other future time.
Just for the commission's information, this was a request for penalty and interest in tax appeal, and the assessor has resolved that issue and talked to the applicant today, and everything has been resolved.
Great. So I guess, are there any changes, comments, questions on the agenda for this evening? So can I motion, just can I, can I, can the motion include that change, or do we need a separate vote for our? Okay. So if you'd like to amend that.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of 2023-382.
Thank you. Motion's been made for the approval of the agenda with the deletion of item 2023-382. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
Next item on our agenda are ceremonial matters. 2023-383 honorary resolution for the Carney Bulldogs football team, and that would be Commissioner Withington. So Commissioner, if you would like to proceed, I have, whoop, let me push a button again one more time. There you go.
All right. So this says, whereas the Carney Bulldog Football Team, led by Coach Logan Minnick, won the Missouri Class Four State Championship December 2nd. This was the Bulldogs' fifth state championship in school history and first since 2015. Whereas the Bulldogs, Aiden Smith, won Missouri Class Four Defensive Player of the Year, and Cameron Emmons won the Fontana Award, was a Fontana Award finalist. Whereas the Bulldogs also had 10 players named Honorable Mention on all-conference, 11 players named First Team All-District, six players named Second Team All-District, two players named Third Team All-State, two players named Second Team All-State, and seven players named First Team All-State. Whereas the Missouri State High School Activity Association also named Bulldogs head coach Logan Minnick Coach of the Year for Missouri Class Four. Whereas the Carney High School Football Team exemplifies the spirit, character, dedication, and commitment to excellence for which we all strive, the Board of Commissioners are pleased to recognize them at this time. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Clay County Board of Commissioners, that we extend to each member of the 2023 Carney Bulldog Football Team our warmest congratulations for their extraordinary efforts on and off the field, and extend our gratitude for the pride they have brought to Clay County. Congratulations, guys, on a great season. Coach, thank you again for the helmet. I got one of every high school in my, in my office, so, you know, you guys have done great. I, you know, look forward to seeing what you guys do next year, but as a Winnetonka alum, you guys have beat us up pretty good the last three years. So if you guys could maybe take it easy on us next year, I'd appreciate that. But congratulations, guys.
Commissioner Lawson, you wish to be recognized?
Yeah, I am so proud of you, all of you. My, yeah, son went through Carney High, my granddaughters went through, and now our great-granddaughter has started in Carney. So it's a very special situation to me. I am so proud of y'all, so proud of the coach. This is, this is a heck of an accomplishment, and, and I think that the nicest thing, from things that I've heard, it's not just their athletic prowess that is good, but they're good guys, and you've instilled good values, and that's going to help them going forward. You know, you make them understand, you know, how much dedication they have to have to do these accomplishments, but more importantly, how do you live day-to-day afterwards? How do you apply those principles? I also want to say, while Carney is outstanding in sports, let's don't forget what we got these kids in school for, and that's the scholastic side of it. I was talking to someone today. They said Carney is in the top 8% for higher education standards in the state of Missouri. So they're not, a top 8% out of 522 schools. That's a heck of an accomplishment. The ACTs are an average of 22. That makes Carney most of the time either first or second in the state. That's unreal. 71% of grads go on to college, and that's a good, really good number. And, and it's neat to know that, that the people that are athletes, as an example, there's 10 people on the volleyball team who also were honored as academic all-stars, and I believe you have some on your football team as well. So that speaks volume about the program that y'all have. So my warmest congratulations, and just super proud of all of you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I too would like to add my congratulations to you guys. You know, last week we had Liberty North High School in here. As you know, they won the, the state championship for Class VI, and it's not too, not too often that a county gets two championships, state championship football teams, high school football teams in their counties. That's, that's pretty spectacular. It's something that our county can be pretty proud of. And, you know, I wasn't able to make it down to your game in Mizzou, the state game. I made it to the Liberty North's game. I, so a couple hours after you guys finished, I was there, but I got to hear all the stories from people that, excuse me, that stayed for both games, and it sounds like it was a pretty spectacular game. You guys are, this isn't your, I know for Carney High School, as far as state championships, this isn't your first rodeo. This is what, number five, I think, for state championships, and that's, that's pretty impressive. But one of the things I told Liberty North, and I'll tell you guys, is, you know, football's, high school football is much bigger than you think. It's much bigger than you. You know, it's, it's fun for you guys to play, and you guys have a good time, but it's really much bigger than that. And it's, it's a sport that really rallies the community behind it. And I know up in Carney, you know, Friday night lights and going to see the high school football game, that's a big deal for a lot of folks, and even folks that don't go to the game, that are watching things at home and, and hearing about it later, and, you know, the social media and stuff. It's a big deal, and I bet there's a lot of people in Carney that knows, each one of you guys by name, that you have no clue who they are. Matter of fact, last week when Liberty North was here, I was rattling off all the guys' names and positions and stuff, they didn't know who I was, but it's because I watched them every single, that's where my kids went. I watched them every single Friday night. But you guys have a big impact on the community, and, and not only that, you guys have stories and memories that you could have for the rest of your life. I mean, football's one thing, but the stories, the friendships you've made, the memories you have, you'll be telling stories to your grandkids, your kids and grandkids, about how you won the state championship. Not everybody can say that, but you won the state championship, and you can brag to your kids and your grandkids about that, and that's, that's just really neat. It's something you can take with you forever, and the memories that you made this year that you take forever. For those of you that are returning, hoping you do it again next year, and for those of you that are going on, see, how many seniors are, raise your hand if you're a senior this year. Okay? Oh, most of you guys. Okay, well then, good luck to you guys going on. I know some of you guys are going on to some bigger and better things in college and stuff, and, but good luck to all of you, and like I said, we're really proud of you. The whole community is proud of you, and thank you for putting on a, for putting on a good show this year. We appreciate it.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Seeing none. Coach, if you would like to give us a pep talk, I guess.
I think I'm out of pep talks, you know, making sure 15 weeks of the season. We're out of those, but obviously, we, we had enough good pep talks to get to where we are now, and just so proud of our kids. What an amazing accomplishment. You know, this is the fifth one for Carney, but this group wasn't part of any of those, so they, they've definitely earned that, definitely this senior group. This is just my second year here back at Carney. This is a group that's put Carney football back to where it needs to be. So, so proud of those guys. I know all our seniors here were really hoping that Liberty North was also going to be here tonight so that we could have the Clay County State Championship and get after those boys, but since they're not, we'll just go ahead and claim that we're the number-one team in Clay County. As far as talk it goes, no comment. But kids also mentioned, I got to get you a new helmet. We switched to white helmets this year, so that may be a determining factor, so we got to get you a new one on that. But just thank you guys so much for, for recognizing this group. As you said, you know, this is a, it's an, it's more of an educational thing than it is athletics. Right now, those, these guys don't understand, but, but they definitely will, you know, as they get older, just the, the life lessons they've learned, the family they have created. You know, they're going to remember these guys forever, so just so proud of that part of it. And again, just thank you guys for recognizing us. It's been a, it's been a really cool ride, you know. I thought, after it was over, it was like, phew, everything's over, and it's like, no, I've still been working for two weeks, but just so proud of our kids. This is our senior class. We just brought seniors tonight, so, you know, thank you guys for putting Carney back on the map, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate the position you guys have earned yourselves to achieving. What we'll do is, Commissioner Withington will present the resolution, so we'll come down, we'll stand at ease for a moment, get some pictures. I'm not sure how we're going to work, because we've got a lot of folks. Yes, sir?
Hallway?
Hallway? That does, I was, I'm glad you said that, because I was a little worried about the logistics. So we will stand at ease for a few minutes while we go out in the hallway, and we'll do the presentation there, and then we will pick up our agenda where we pause. So we will stand at ease.
Aye.
I'd like to bring us back into session. We just stood at ease as we attended to our ceremonial matters. The next issue on our agenda is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to make any comments on preferably non-agenda items, but anything? I see none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items this evening on the consent agenda. The first item is commission meeting minutes from December 13th and Resolution 2023-379, which is consideration of approving invoice payments for Clay County from December 9th through December 20th. There are 672 invoices in the amount of $4,983,224.50.
Commissioner Wagner.
I think you move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
Resolution 2023-380 is consideration of invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from December 9th through December 20th. There are 13 invoices totaling $10,005.11.
I think you move to approve 2023-380.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-380. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Motion passes. Five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our agenda are two companion items, 2023 Ordinance 43 and 2023-381. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 43 is consideration of reappropriation and revision to the adopted budget for the current year, and the companion ordinance, resolution, excuse me, is Resolution 2023-381, is the transfer between funds to close out the remaining interest no longer needed in Fund 403 Link, and moving those proceeds to the general fund rainy day. And Auditor Herbert is here to answer any questions that the commission may have about the change.
Does the commission have any questions of Auditor for Hurlberg? Seeing none. Do you have anything you'd wish to say, as long as you're up here?
Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor, the only thing I'll add is that really, this is just best practice. These funds are of such a low balance and are no longer needed, according to those expenditure authorities, who are essentially ending these funds, closing out the balances. So happy to answer any questions.
Very well. I see no further questions. Commissioner Wagner.
I think you move to approve 2023 Ordinance 43 and 2023-381.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 43 and 2023-381. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
Next on, next on our agenda is 2023 Ordinance 44. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 44 is a consideration of a reappropriation and revision to the adopted current budget in the amount of $50,000, and Auditor Herbert is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. So what this is, is if you recall, last year, we received the first tranche of $50,000 of something, a program from the American Rescue Plan Act that was funded by that bill called the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. It was essentially to provide payments to local governments, and essentially, you know, last year, we used that $50,000 to plug a hole in the 911 budget. This year, the proposal from staff is essentially to help supplement the cost for the new juvenile transitions facility, and so this is basically to be able to capture that as we roll into the next year and be able to encumber it by the end of the year.
Are there any questions of the auditor? Seeing none. Commissioner Wagner.
I think you move to approve 2023 Ordinance 44.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 44. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
Next on our agenda is 2023-385. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-385 is approving a lease to purchase and trade-in equipment, lease purchase 16 pieces of golf course equipment with a trade-in of 13 pieces of equipment with Vanwall Equipment, and Deputy Parks Director Davis is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Parks Director. This is a request, four-year lease for 16 pieces of specialty golf course equipment. This consists of some hybrid green mowers, which are hybrid meaning now that they are using electric to run the cutting portion of the mower, and in that, it's gas-operated. Two greens rollers, four heavy-duty utility vehicles, kind of like a UTV, but they haul materials, four other lighter-duty John Deere utility vehicles, two types of cutting heads for the mowers, and then we're also looking at the OnLink software, which is a management software for, that tracks the usage of equipment, and...
Okay.
So we're looking at four payments of $114,453.89 with a dollar buyout for four years.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing this forward. I guess my, my question is related to more understanding what our fleet looks like, and so is this a total replacement of fleet? Is it, is it partial, and down the line, we'll be doing other replacements? Can you, just need a little context, I guess.
It's a partial. This is mainly some of the outdated equipment and aging equipment that we're replacing, basically trying to get in a better rotation so we're not going to where they're...
Sure, because at some point, the maintenance of something just costs more than just buying new.
Yes. We're getting more into the, a lot of this equipment's more computer-based, and it's...
Gotcha.
And if I could interject also, over the years, there have been some deferred replacement of equipment at the golf course over the years, and so to some degree, we're playing a little bit of catch-up.
Okay.
With this number coming before you at one time.
Gotcha. And, and so the lifespan we expect, so we've got a four- to five-year payment period, but the lifespan of the equipment is roughly...
Just depends on use, so we're hoping, we're hoping to do a better rotation, not just completely wear the equipment out, and that way, we could trade them off at an earlier rate, maybe four or five, or maybe five to six years down the line.
Okay.
Then they hold their value more, and then we can offset the cost a little bit better.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there a, you were saying that this year, we're kind of playing catch-up? Is there a, you were saying that this year, we're kind of playing catch-up. Will this year catch us up? Or will we be looking at another, you know, another catch-up effort in the next year?
As far as I know, this will catch us up for...
Very good. Commissioner Carpenter?
Excuse me, but if I could clarify, there are funds in next year's budget for equipment. So we're trying not to get behind and play catch-up going forward. So certainly, we do have funds in next year's budget for some equipment at the golf course.
Yeah, I guess where I was going with that was this will put us on the, a more general rotation, a more even rotation. We're kind of caught up in, there's always going to be that equipment turnover. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to, I've heard Commissioner Lawson and Withington, especially in the context of our next item that's coming up on the agenda, talk about some of the expenses that we incur through some of our sort of specialty parks programs, things like the marina, in this case, the golf course. You know, I just want to observe that often we do spend a lot of money out of the golf course. Auditor Hurlbert did a really great audit a couple of years ago showing, going back just over a decade, I think, showing their operating, you know, are they in the red or in the black? And essentially closer to 2010, they were losing hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. In recent years, they've been generating a few hundred thousand dollars a year. Over time, it's pretty close to a wash. What that doesn't count, though, are some of the big capital purchases and investments that get made every so often. For example, the previous commission, well, two commissions ago, I guess, you all may recall borrowed $50 million to do a number of different items, over the objections of Commissioner Nolte, of course.
Thank you.
One of those items was, I think, about $5 million went into the golf course out of that $50 million. And I believe that got expended. I don't think we elected the new commission in time to... And so I guess my observation is just this, we do spend a lot of money out at the golf course, especially when you include that every five, 10, 15 years, we do another big capital investment out there, often in the multimillion-dollar range. And so I guess I just want to validate your point, Commissioner Lawson, that we do spend a lot of money on things, not just the trap shoot. And I think it is worth having some thought as to whether or not it makes sense for the county to continue making sizable investments into a program that could otherwise be provided by the free market and is. You know, certain things like roads, you know, the government's going to pave the roads or nobody's going to. Golf courses, obviously, get created and run by the private sector all the time. So given that a lot of taxpayer money gets put into this particular line item, and since we're doing the budget, just thought I would mention that in the years forward, we have, I think, a variety of options as to whether or not we want to keep making these kinds of sizable investments or not. And if we do, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to point out that your observation that we should have discussions going forward on different issues is, of course, a break from some time in the past, those years when discussions, as you are referring to, were not allowed to go forward. I just parenthetically want to add that I think this commission is much more open to discussion and much more open to exploring issues than we have in the past. I think that speaks well of the present commission and of our system that we are currently working under, that we can have discussions of the sort that you've mentioned. With that, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Just to continue with that same trend, talking about how much money we're spending here. I certainly don't claim to be an expert on all this, but I do have some farming equipment, have purchased tractors and done some research. And I'm always concerned about, when it comes to government agencies, about how much you pay for things. You've all heard the stories of the $1,000 hammer that you can go buy for 20 bucks at Home Depot. But because it's government, we somehow pay more. But, so I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on this. And actually, I guess, I want to give you an opportunity to talk about that. One of the things I've seen here is got a lot of John Deere products. John Deere puts out a great product, but there's also a tremendous upcharge for the color green. Costs a lot more just because it's John Deere. Have we shopped around? And can you tell us the process that we've gone through to select these? And are we getting the best deal that we can on these? Or can you elaborate on that for me a little bit?
Yes. We went out and got quotes from another equipment, which is Toro, another high price for paint color. We did not get one. Golf course equipment is usually Toro, John Deere, or Jacobson. Staff recommended from the golf course, it's either John Deere or Toro, because Jacobson is getting to be hard to get parts for. They come from Europe and they've been having trouble. So we don't have a lot of Jacobson stuff. Toro was a little bit more expensive, was more expensive than the John Deere.
But I see a couple of things on here. Like, I can understand, like, certain kind of mowers and stuff for golf courses, but things like a Gator. I mean, there's a million different makers of Gators, that kind of stuff. Did we do our due diligence in shopping around for a Gator?
Some of those Gators are not like your store, your ones you're looking at. They haul heavier loads, so they haul materials and all that. That, and they've got better turf tires and shocks, so they're not tearing up golf course greens and stuff like that. So the answer to that is yes and no, because it's, like I said, it's more specialized for golf course work.
Sure. Okay, I understand. And I'm just, I'm not saying that you haven't. I just want to make sure that it's clear that the expectation is that when we, when we buy things, that we do our due diligence, just because we're the government and we have, you know, a few million dollars. I expect us to be like, hey, I'm buying this for my house. I'm going to get the best possible deal I can and get them down as low as I can. And like, it's my own money, kind of a thing. And I just want to make sure that we do that, because as we've seen, as we've gone through this budget process, every penny counts. And we can always use money for raises for all of you. So if, matter of fact, one of these would probably give you guys all another 1% raise. So just think about that, when we're picking these things out, that we're conscious of getting the best possible deal we can.
And we do to the best of our ability.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, you know, when I saw this today, I came in and I was looking at all the items. And I saw that. The first thing I saw was that it was in Overland Park. So I called the guy in Smithville. And I said, you know, we're buying this equipment. Just for grins, were you included in the bid? And he, and I told him what it was for. And he said, no. And he said, I'll tell you why. He said, that is one of the few places that you can buy the proper types of mowers and things that are useful for the golf course. Because I felt, just like you did. In fact, I even called down to Victor and I said, what was our profit last year for the golf course? You know, how much money did we make? And then, and then when this guy said that, he said, you know, we'd love to be able to do it. And he said, we'd give you a heck of a price, but we don't have the equipment. And John Deere only allows certain people to have that capability. So if you're looking at a John Deere, you got to go to O'Leite then, buy it, if it's for the golf course. No. Share your concern.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-385.
Motion's made for the approval of 2023-385. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Next item on our agenda is 2023-386. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-386 is approving the utilization of ARPA funding for the project associated with the Kansas City Trap Shooters Association cleanup, the Parks Department. This has been before the commission at several meetings and several discussions. And certainly, staff is here to answer any questions if you need additional information. The amount of the allocation is $600,000.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission, either generally or directed to staff? Seeing none. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-386.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-386. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Grudgingly, yes.
Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to the final item under our regular agenda, 2023-387.
Resolution 2023-387 is approving the RFP and term and supply contract and capital project encumbrance with Pearson Golf Construction LLC for bunker renovations. And Deputy Director Davis is here to provide information about the project.
Please proceed.
Deputy Director, John Davis. This is a request to do bunker renovations at Paradise Point Golf Course. Currently, we have 153 sand bunkers, approximately about 95,000 square feet of bunkers. The last time they were renovated was near 2000. Right now, the condition of these bunkers are basically the sand traps, you have dirt base and sand on top of it causes, right now, it causes, there's problems with issues of drainage during rain, erosion, weeds and grass growing up through them. We went out for proposal for vendors to repair these, sent out four requests for proposals, two have responded. Staff has requested use Pearson Golf Construction and use what they call as capillary concrete bunkers. Capillary concrete bunkers are a little more expensive, but the warranty and longevity of them are better. It's a composite of, it's a concrete, porous concrete that you pour after they empty, they'll go in, renovate, empty all the sand out of the bunkers, pour a concrete base in, which is porous, so allows for drainage. And then there'll also be, some of them will have bigger drainage filters, and then they'll put sand on top of them. This, with this company, there's a 10, what was the, 10-year warranty. We can also, it doesn't void the warranty if we have to work on them ourselves. With this project, we're looking at 225,000, which we have budgeted this year. And we're going to start with about 15,000 square feet of bunkers as of right now. Expected longevity, you know, the, our poorly ones that we had lasted close to 23 years. So we're expecting with a better product, at least a lot longer that, if we have better care and upkeep of them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, you anticipated, actually, my question was, I was wondering what the longevity was. This is, you know, decent amount of money here. So I was wanting to see whether or not we would be revisiting this expense, because you'd mentioned 2000. Obviously, that was 23 years ago. And I wanted to see if we would be able to get further life out of the newer models. Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I would, John, Commissioner Carpenter said pretty much what I was going to say earlier, but I would like to see a new profit and loss statement with all the capital expenditures that we've put into the golf course. And, you know, I understand, I wasn't on the commission the last time, but I understand that it didn't include all these capital improvements and everything. So I would like to see, you know, if we are making, getting a return on our investment and include all the capital expenditures, so.
Commissioner Withington, excuse me, is Commissioner Wagner, sorry about that?
No, no. Well, we look a lot alike. Thanks for catching that. The, my question is really, I guess, an offshoot of that. And I'll just preface it by saying, you know, three years as a board member of Kansas City's Parks Department, they have a number of golf facilities. And so these sorts of things aren't alien to me. But what, but I think in addition to profit and loss, I would certainly like to see what we anticipate as capital needs or other maintenance related to the courses. You know, I understand, you know, with any park system, doesn't matter what it is, there's a bit of subsidy that goes along with that. I get that. But marrying what our revenue is with what we may be paying or have to pay over time would at least suggest to me, I guess, to the previous conversations, you know, what are we in for, at least in the next, you know, three, four, five years? And as we've talked about before, related to the budget, you know, in my mind, being able to set these funds aside over time, assuming that there is money that's being generated, sure makes it much easier to swallow large amounts, because it's not always having to come out of a new budget. There is something being set aside through some funding mechanism to do that. But that's a discussion for another time. Suffice it to say, I think I would like to have an understanding of what we're looking at as far as capital and maintenance, married with that profit and loss, just to have a better feel for what are we looking at over time. I think that would, there would be some value, at least to me, in understanding that. So, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Commissioner Withington?
To go even further, I would like to see that for the entire Parks Department, too. So if that's something we could get done, like, you know, the marina?
We could do, basically, I think we're talking about program, program budgeting, right, with regard to taking each program, which it's the marina or the trap and skeet or whatever programs that we have. And if the commission may recall, during the budget process, that's one of the things I talked about, is we're slowly moving into that. We started it with this year's budget, and we've tried to do it again in next year's budget, to moving those expenditures in, including utilities, all of those, by parks, by activities, so that we can get a better understanding. Because it was my understanding, when the auditor did it several years ago, it was still very hard to get a picture, because some of the expenses for the operating of the golf course were buried in the parks' operating costs versus associated with the golf course. So we're trying to get to that point. And so then we might be able to do that. Again, with regard to the capital plan, I would say that in the five-year capital plan, there are capital outlay out of the use tax, park use tax fund for the golf course over those five years. So we'll be able to extrapolate that and probably then present a report to you specifically on the golf course. It may take us a little bit longer to get into more of some of our other programs of the parks, but we'll work towards that and see what we can put together for you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I appreciate this process going forward as it is. Again, looking back some years, seeing three or four different members of staff talking about how things were, how money was being spent, and no, it was here, no, it was there, no, it was here. And every budget year, it seemed to be in a different line item. It was, to say confusing would be kind of an understatement. I appreciate this more straightforward and more businesslike manner of us being able to see what the expenses are and make an evaluation and cast our informed votes and create good policy. With that, Commissioner Wagner? See, I got you this time.
Appreciate that. Move to approve 2023-387.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-387. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda. We have, I believe, one item on our, for discussion items, yes. And that is recap of 2024 proposed budget. The Administrator and Administrator, could you give us that lineup, how you'd like to proceed, whether you'd like to cover one section and then go for questions? Just let us kind of know how you would unfold your presentation in the best way possible.
Sure. So this is a very high-level overview recap of the budget on a county-wide basis. But what we wanted to do is come back before the commission and identify those areas of direction that you gave us during the workshops. And those have been included in these changes. So I would say feel free, you know, if there are questions as I go through, you know, I'll try and keep an eye on for lights and certainly be happy to stop and answer questions at that time. So again, this is just a recap of the proposed 2024 budget. As a reminder, the budget process started a long time ago, early in the year, with the commission's strategic planning process. And so this was our guiding principle in putting together the 2024 proposed budget, not only about the vision statement, but also aligning our resources with the five focus areas that the commission had identified in the strategic planning process. in the strategic plan, along with, you had also identified goals, short-term goals, over the next two to five years. And so we'll highlight what those goals are that are included in the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, and how we've aligned the resources to these focus areas. So just again, talking about the budget as a whole, this is countywide numbers. And again, this does reflect changes that we were directed to do during the workshop. So the total budget for twenty twenty-four, the total authorized budget in twenty twenty-four is a hundred and sixty-one point nine million dollars. Now, in that number includes what we would consider one-time money, the ARPA funding and some bond funding. And so when we try to do a comparison of what is happening with the budget on a countywide basis, then we remove those one-time dollars. And so we have a proposed twenty twenty-four budget of a hundred and forty-two point nine million dollars. And as you see on this chart, we've given you the twenty-two adopted budget and the twenty-three adopted budget. So the proposed twenty-four budget is six percent increase over the twenty twenty-three budget that was adopted by the commission. And so we look at where the resource is coming from on a countywide basis for a hundred and sixty-one point nine million dollars. And you see that the largest operating revenue that the county has is sales tax. Thirty-two percent of our revenue source comes from our sales tax projections. The second largest operating revenue category that we have is fees, fines, leases and licenses, and that's eleven percent of our operating revenue. We also have four percent coming in from property tax, we have some grants, miscellaneous, reimbursements, transfers, and then also to, to have a balance, when we look at the budget, we also show reserves, which are eligible, eligible, which gets us to the hundred and sixty-one point nine million dollars. Sales tax, because that is our major source of revenue, want to take a little bit of time to kind of walk through the sales tax. So our sales tax and our use tax in the twenty twenty-four budget total, fifty-one million dollars, a little over fifty-one million dollars. And so you see in the chart to the far left, breaks down the types of sales tax and use tax that we receive. So the first gray box is the use tax, which again, internet sales, that is estimated to be ten point two million dollars. The use tax, sales tax rate is seven-eighths of one percent, that's paid on internet purchases. The second category there you'll see is our law enforcement sales tax, which is a dedicated sales tax. It is one-eighth of a cent sales tax that goes directly to our law enforcement fund. That is estimated to be five point eight million dollars. And then we have the general sales tax category. And we have two general sales tax that total three-fourths of one percent, and that is estimated to generate thirty-five million dollars. Now, the second chart on this slide shows you the general sales allocation. So again, general sales totals the thirty-five million. And so the chart in the center shows you the allocation of that sales tax. Now, we're putting seven percent of our sales tax goes into the TIF fund. We're also having a direct allocation of our general sales tax in the amount of eight point nine million dollars to go into the law enforcement fund. There's a small amount going to parks for four hundred and forty-five thousand, and road and bridge is getting a direct allocation of two point three million, leaving twenty point six million in the general fund. But then, there's another step. In the general fund budget, there is an allocation of the twenty point six million dollars in sales tax to go to other funds to help sustain their operating budget. And so the far chart on the right will show you how is that allocation in expenses in the general fund to transfer money out of the general fund into other operating. So you'll see out of the twenty point six million, ten point two million goes to the law enforcement fund. Seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand is to be transferred to the emergency communication fund as needed, as law enforcement is as needed. The other small amounts are actually statutory transfers that we do. And then there are small amounts going to the road and bridge fund as needed, and the park fund as needed, to address one of the changes that the commission asked us to implement in the twenty twenty-four budget for the additional one percent increase in cost of living to cover those costs in those funds. So the general fund will retain nine point two million dollars in its operating budget. So of the twenty point six million dollars, fifty-five percent of it will come out of the general fund and go into the other funds, with the general fund retaining the nine point two, or in essence, forty-five percent of that sales tax will stay in the general fund. So as we look at tax-supported revenues, this chart will show you both property tax allocation, which includes real estate and personal property, and then sales and use tax allocation. So on the far left is property tax, which the county receives six point seven million. We have the general property tax, and that equates to about twenty-four percent of the revenue. Road and bridge has its own mill levy that goes into the road and bridge fund, which is basically seventy percent of the revenue. And then the park fund receives six percent of it, which is really a portion of the Surtax, that's our businesses pay, and so that goes into the park fund. The right side shows you the sales and use tax allocation. After that previous chart that I just showed you allocates all the funds, you will see of the fifty-one million dollars of sales tax, forty-eight percent of it goes to the law enforcement fund, with eighteen percent of it in the general fund, and seven percent goes to the TIF fund. And then you see all the other supporting funds, such as the use tax for parks, highway, general use tax, road and bridge, nine-one-one, and some of the other smaller funds. We look at expenditures. Again, the authorizing expenditure is a hundred and sixty-one point nine million dollars, and the chart on the left shows you by category. So thirty-seven percent of that authorization is in personnel, twenty-nine percent of it is in contractual, six is in commodities, eight is in capital, twelve percent of it is that one-time money for ARPA, bonds and the emergency rental, and then eight percent is transfers. But when we look and, and go from the authorization to the operating budget, the actual operating budget for the county, it's a hundred and twenty point two million dollars. And for the operating budget, you see that fifty percent of that is spent on personnel, we're in the people business. Contractual is thirty-two percent, eight percent is commodities, and eleven percent is capital. So how do we get from a hundred and sixty-one point nine authorized to a hundred and twenty point two as an operating budget? So this chart is designed to help show how we get to that number. So we start with an authorizing budget of a hundred and sixty-one point nine million dollars. Again, we step aside our one-time money of ARPA and bonds, and that brings us down to about a hundred and forty-two point nine million. But included in those expenditures is also the transfers. And we've talked about this in the aspect, to do a transfer from a, from a financial standpoint, you have to expense it out of the fund that is sending it to another fund, which shows it as revenue, but then that fund turns around and spends the money in their expenditures. So it's really a double expense entry, which we have to do for accounting purposes. But from a budgetary standpoint, you know, I laugh when I tell you, we can only spend money once. And so when you reduce the transfer, that gets it to a hundred and twenty-nine point four. But also included in our expenditure budget are line items for reserves, carryover or contingency. And so when you take away the reserves, then you get to the operating budget, which is the hundred and twenty point two million dollars. So how have we allocated those operating expenditures by the focus areas that are identified by the commission as your priorities under the strategic plan? Thirty-eight percent of the operating budget is on safety, twenty-seven percent of it is on infrastructure, thirteen is on the employer of choice, fifteen percent is on financially sustainable, and seven percent is on economy. So I think it's important on this slide to show that sixty-five percent of the operating budget is dedicated to the two priorities of the commission and of our citizens, which is safety and infrastructure. So some of the highlights in safety, and I won't read through all of these, because we've talked about these during the workshops that we've done, but we've certainly addressed salaries for our deputies, increasing the starting salary, and also funding compression for the deputies of our existing staff. There is funding to do a needs assessment of the detention facility, which was one of the goals identified in the commission's strategic plan. We've done some salary adjustments in addition to the cost of living that we'll talk about for our juvenile detention and group homes, to address retention and retainage. We've also added two assistant prosecutors to the budget for next year and an administrative support position. And we've done some technology funding for whether it's upgrades in technology or in equipment. There's also funding for a needs assessment for the Rooney Justice Center, which again, was one of the goals identified by the commission in your strategic plan. We look at infrastructure. We have staff that are proposed, a painter position and also an engineering position. We have funding for security in buildings and upgrades to our buildings, along with equipment replacement in our buildings. Also, work continues at the golf course, funding our vehicle and equipment replacement plan for both facilities, parks and road and bridge. In addition, we've done additional salary adjustment proposed for our operational personnel in the highway department, again, to address retainage and retention for those positions. We've increased the street preservation and maintenance program for ten percent, which again, has been a goal of the commission to continue to increase, especially on our roads. We have funded the equipment replacement, we've added GPS fleet tracking, and also the replacement of the Stocktail Bridge, which is estimated in the budget at three point five million, which the county has received a grant in the amount of three point two million dollars. We also have funds to design the old two-ten bridge for its replacement. In financial sustainability category, we are proposing to add scanning software for asset inventory. We also have technology replacements for our computers and our switches. We are also forming the new county-wide GIS department. We're also recommending that a part-time position be reclassified to a full-time position in the treasurer's office. When we look at economic opportunity, we are increasing resources to three of the outside agencies. We are funding the membership of the county in the Missouri County Association and the National County Association organizations. We are adding additional funding for elections that will occur in twenty twenty-four. As it is a presidential election, those costs are typically higher in a presidential year. And we have also added funding for an April ballot issue that would have a county question on that April ballot. Also important to note, and I mentioned it earlier, historically, we have allocated ten percent of sales tax to the TIF fund, but we've had some TIFs that are retiring. And so our trend analysis validated that we can reduce that transfer from ten percent to seven percent, which certainly helps the county's budget dealing with inflationary costs that we have in doing business. When it comes to the employer of choice category, what is in the budget is a five percent cost of living increase for all non-smorn personnel. As we talked about, we are doing increases for the starting salary and compression for existing deputies. We've made additional adjustments for highway personnel and in our juvenile offices. And we are also funding, recommending a classification and compensation study, which is also a goal that was identified in the commission's strategic plan. With regard to the positions that I mentioned, there are two assistant prosecutors that are being added, one support staffer the prosecutor's office, an engineer for the county, a painting position, and also the upgrade of a part-time position to a full-time position in the treasurer's office. As we look at the proposed operating budget of a hundred and twenty point two million dollars, this shows you the allocation by fund. So you see that of the operating expenditures, twenty-eight percent of it is in the general fund, with eleven percent in highway, twenty-three percent of it is in the law enforcement fund, and it goes on around. So these are the major, eleven major large funds. But the county has thirty-six funds total in our budget, in our operating budget. So you see at the top miscellaneous is five percent, and there are actually twenty-five small funds that total into the miscellaneous funds that equals five percent. But we have earmarked for you our eleven major funds and the allocation of our operating budget. We certainly want to thank the staff, the office holders, for all their hard work in putting together the proposed budget. As I said, it started back in March or April with your strategic plan. The departments worked diligently, along with the budget team, put a lot of work into it. And the commission has put a lot of work and time into it, reviewing all the information we provided to you, attending the four special meetings that we've had. And today is simply a recap and get additional information from the commission, because the budget is scheduled for a public hearing and adoption at your next regular meeting, which is January fourth. And with that, I stand for questions.
Questions or comments for the administrator? Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Couple things, and I guess I'll start off by saying, as diligent as I try to be, I couldn't make all the meetings. And I missed one yesterday, got to, watched it between the meetings that I had this day at the office for, so talked, learned a little, few things. Before I get to that one, though, I'll go to the item that I, I've harped on from the beginning, and I've talked to the administrator, so she is not surprised with what I'm about to talk about. But that is the, the issue of vacancies and how that affects what we budget for, but what the trends actually show. I, to not make it a bigger deal than it, than it is or should be, I just note the, the discrepancy of such a size catches my attention, and I, I would hope others, because as we talk about, and what I'll probably talk about next, these, the, these smaller items, and I'll say they're smaller, because it's, you know, thirty thousand here and a hundred thousand there, or whatever. And I'm thinking, here's twenty million dollars. I'm trying to understand. That, to me, especially coupled with our discussion of what our, what our reserves look like over time, give me some pause. And I admitted when we first started about this, I may not get what I'm looking for this budget, and I will accept that. But I will just simply throw it out again to say, I, I would hate for us to be penny wise but pound foolish in this regard. And, and it must be dealt with in some manner, because I think, as has been shown, that reserve goes lower and lower and lower over time, to which point you don't have much for carryover to deal with, yet you still have this giant discrepancy. I'll leave it at that point, but just to say, I am interested and will be asking for how we deal with that as we get through the next year. If you want to comment to that, that's fine, and then we'll move on.
Absolutely. And, and so Commissioner Wagner and I have had some discussions about this. And so, you know, you're exactly right. We need to do a deeper dive with regard to vacancies. We always know we are going to have vacancies. There, you know, even in good times, when, you know, everyone hasn't been having the great resignation and everything that's been going on lately, you know, there are just vacancies that just happen. So, but I think it has to be a, a deeper dive, right? So it can't be all salaries, so we may need to be looking at how are we budgeting when it comes to benefits. So where is that discrepancy with regard to savings? And do, so it's going to take some analysis. And we're right there with you. And as soon as we get the budget through, then we're going to start digging in to the actuals in the past.
Yeah.
Because that will help us tell the story. We've looked at the trends as a whole, but now we need to dive a little deeper into categories.
Right.
And then maybe even subcategories within those.
No, I appreciate that, and I agree, first things first. And I don't want that discussion, which will require a lot of work, to hold up something that we want to pass in a couple weeks. But I do want to throw it out there, because I, I, I am convinced of its importance, and I will continue to harp on that until there's some satisfactory resolution to that. Onto this particular budget, though, I, and again, I prefaced my comments with, you know, I missed a humdinger of one yesterday, and all I could do was just watch a little bit of yesterday's discussion. I, I, and I'll also preface it by, my comments by saying, perhaps the ship has sailed, but it wouldn't be the first time I jumped in the water. So why not? I, I, I have a little pause, actually a big pause, when it comes to, to the things that I understand came out of yesterday. One I watched, one I could not watch. The one I did watch was related to how we were taking some funds away from NNI and providing it to our housing partners in, in Liberty. I don't, I don't have an issue with helping our, that organization. I also see that we've sent an email out, and there's been some response, basically saying that, and that we've, we have basically created, without passing the budget, we've now created the notion that there is going to be an increase. And I'm not exactly the one that's going to say, you know, I'm not going to play one organization off of another. You, you hit, you hit the button, so I think you're going to say something.
Well, so just for clarification.
Yeah.
To the commission, because after the discussion yesterday, there was a request to get information from Rebuilding KC about their building capacity. So there was no guarantee. guarantee in my email to them. It was simply was, you know, would you have, if, because they're such a worthwhile organization, if there could be additional funds.
Right.
Coming from the county, you know, do you have projects, and do you have the capacity to carry out those projects?
Sure.
So, but, you know, if I'm them and I get a question like that, I'm doing cartwheels, because I'm thinking there's an opportunity to get more money.
There's now an expectation that has been, been created, and I understand that, and I'm not one to now tell everyone, well, just yank those expectations back. However, I do have some issue with how NNI was characterized, and having some history, not only in that organization, but also in other organizations that do similar work, community development corporations, I am concerned, because what I feel like is, we had them in front of us as a body not so long ago, to do the reports that as of last budget, we required them to make. They presented that, especially with examples of work that they have done in, in the county, not just in Kansas City, and just a little bit later, we're basically saying, you know what, you're doing pretty well, so even though it was recommended to, to fund them at the level requested, we took that away. I'm not sure why. And certainly, based on their appearance here, there was certainly, I don't think, anything portrayed to them or said to them publicly that suggested that they were not following through on what they had promised to do. And so I marry, well, before I do some marriage, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the other issue that I did not watch, related to the Clay County EDC. And I know, we have had lots of discussions related to Clay County EDC, but here again, I am trying to understand when they have said to us, first of the year, they are going to give us their strategic plan, we as a body have decided, if I understand correctly, we have a, as a body have directed that, well, we don't want to hear that to inform our decision. We're going to go ahead and reallocate those funds. And I guess my, as I marry those things together now, my, my, my issue is simply that, to be good partners, one of the things we have to do is to be consistent. And based on what has been reported to us, I feel it very premature to move money around, especially since, since we just, and you'll forgive me, but it just feels like, and what I observed, it just kind of feels like we just decided to do it, with not even the opportunity for them to plead their case. We just did it. To me, when, if we're going to do that, then to me, there must be something that backs up the reason to do so. And I guess, again, if the ship has sailed, the ship has sailed, but it seems to me then, in subsequent budget conversations, as we go into the future, when we've lowered amounts or eliminated amounts, but we have given more than what has been asked of us, there should be some guiding policy that directs that, more than just simply saying, I think it should just go to someone else. Because if we get into a habit like that, I feel like it opens us up for lots of other issues down the road. I'm going to advocate, and I'll just, and I'll close with this, I will simply advocate, don't take away from the folks we just said, you're probably going to get more. Restore the one that we said, that we would, that, to me, there just seems no reason to take away from. And as to the third, related to the EDC, I say, keep the money there, tell, have them come back to us to say, here is our strategic plan, and if we don't buy it, we don't like it, okay, fine. But I just look to this body, and I think others look to this body for consistency. I would prefer that we do so, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington?
So, my response for the EDC is, this super majority of this commission voted back in August. They knew this was coming. They, they are the ones who decided not to work with us. Now, I'm not going to speak for everybody, everybody else can speak for themselves, but for me, I'm conf, I feel, you know, confident about, you know, supporting what we did yesterday. I mean, they knew that this was going to, that them not wanting to work with us, this was probably what was going to happen. And let's be honest, I mean, the people here yesterday, we weren't the ones that started this. It was started by Jerry in Aug, in March of last year, when he's the one that's, you know, brought up, he wanted to appoint a second person to the, to the executive board. He wanted to name an office, and this commission just said, hey, we want to have a say in who that, so, I mean, I mean, you know, we discussed this. This has been going on for almost a year, right? So when they were here in June, I looked Slater in the eye, and I said to him, hey, you know, and if Slater, if the EDC wants to be a good partner, have they reached out to anybody on this commission? No, but David Slater sure as hell trashed this entire commission today at the Northland Chamber. What kind of partner is that? Is that really somebody we want to work with? Now, as for NNI, I just threw out the idea that we look at the idea. NNI, I, I'm not saying that anything bad about NNI. They do good work. Now, I question, you know, how they're spending that money into the county and not in Kansas City, but, you know, when Rebuilding KC comes to us, and they say, hey, look, you know, we have a backlog, and you have another organization doing the exact same work, just because the one that's getting more money is politically connected, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem splitting it 50/50, you know? But, you know, maybe instead of just sending applications to, for funding to organizations that we gave money to historically, maybe we open, starting next year, let's be fair, we open up a brand-new application process, and any nonprofit in this county can apply for it. We allocate a certain amount of money, and then we can decide which organizations get what. Or we could follow Platte County's model and just not fund outside agencies, and this problem's solved. But, you know, NNI got, started getting money 20 years ago from this commission. It was 50,000, in 2011, they got $50,000. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see what the problem is. Their budget has grown from under $1 million to $2 million. 90, what, 95% is public taxpayer dollars. So, $20,000, $22,000 is 1% of their budget. If they can't survive on 1% of their budget, what the hell are they doing? So I'm just trying to be fair and say, hey, two organizations, both doing the exact same amount of work, and I know you'll probably say, oh, well, NNI does something different. NNI will still do those programs even without the $23,000, because they get money from Gladstone and Kansas City to provide those services, but they aren't providing those services outside of the county. So, that's all I'm saying. NNI, I'm not trying to pick a fight with NNI. They do good work, but you have two organizations doing the exact same work, let's just make it 50/50. And if NNI can't live off $22,000, without $22,000, I don't, I don't know what the hell they're doing. I mean, Deb Herman sat right back there last year when we questioned how they were spending the money. She stood up and said, they can keep their effing money, because she didn't want us to have, put restrict, or demand accountability. And we still voted to give her money, and our auditor still told us that there's no line item in their budget that says exactly how the money's being spent.
Did you have any response? Because I mean, obviously, there was a conversation between you two, and I didn't want to go to the next speaker until you concluded here.
Thank you. So I won't belabor it, but I will say, say this. Will the, will it close, would NNI close with $22,000 taken away? No, obviously not. The question is not whether they open or close, it is whether, where they do their service. And I would just point out, and again, I, I'm not trying to pick one over the other, but the scopes of the work they do on houses are different. And what I would say, you know, is the money that comes through the county can go and get leveraged. Are you going to see a line item that says, Clay County money did this? No. What I would expect you to see, as we saw, was here's the addresses of the work. And you're correct, that they have contracts with Kansas City, they have contracts with Gladstone, and they'll still do them. But the reality is that, let's say someone needs, because it's always the high dollar one, and I say this because I'm doing exactly the same work in northeast Kansas City and Jackson County every day. We do the same sort of work with our partners. Someone needs a roof, guess what? You're running through that money fast. And so all I would say is simply, they're not going to, they're not going to close their doors, they're not going to, you know, not have something to do. All it is, at the end of the day, is how much of their work do you want them to do in addresses that are not in Kansas City and Gladstone? And if the answer is, I'd like them to do more, well, that's a funding question, and that's where it comes up. But, but one other thing that you did mention, Commissioner, that I, that I do agree with, is to me, part of the issue, why we run into the issues what I mentioned before. People have had history, right? They come forward, they ask for money because they got it before. That is a way to do business, but I think what this episode illustrates for me is that if, if the county is going to participate in things, and my belief is that it should, for all the same reasons why, you know, we pay taxes in the western part of this county, can we see something for that? To me, this is one of the ways that you can. But I also believe that if, if it is, if what we do is constructed very loosely, then it, then it gives opportunity for discussions like this tonight. And I think what I would pose to your point is, hey, if we're going to participate with organizations in this county, then let's have a framework that everybody understands, and, and then let the chips fall where they may. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. So, you know, don't, again, I don't want to say that other organizations aren't deserving, but I just want to make sure that the playing field is the same. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry, hold on, Commissioner. There you go.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. You know, I think the playing field should be even, but I also think that, you know, we shouldn't, this is our budget, right? And they put in a request. It's our job then to decide how we want to, you know, fund that. Last year, the Northland Healthcare Alliance, what did we give them, 30,000? They requested 40,000, but we only gave them 30,000. There, you know, so all I'm saying is, this is our budget. This is the largest public policy, or the biggest public policy decision we'll make every year. So just because they request it, doesn't mean that we have to give it to them, right? And, and so I'm not, again, I, I don't see this as a, now, I have history with NNI, so I'm sure they see it as an attack, but I can tell you, this is not an attack on NNI. I have, I see two organizations doing the same amount of work, doing the same work. One does more work outside of the more urban area. Why not just break it in half? You know, that's, that's where I'm at. So, you know, if Deb's watching, and Dave Mecklenburg's watching, and anybody else from the board's watching, I want them to know, this isn't an attack on them. I just see two organizations doing the same work, and that's where I'm at. So, and, and all I'm saying is, I threw it out for, just as a suggestion yesterday. So, yeah, so I just want them to, everybody to know, this isn't an attack on them or anything like that, right? So it's just, I'm trying to be, I, I think it's fair for two organizations doing the same, to get the same funding, and, I mean, if I wanted to be an ass, I could have said, fine, why don't we just give NNI 30,000, because that's what, you know, Rebuilding KC, you know, but, so that, so that's all, that's, that's, that's why I threw out what I had. But I think next year, we should come up with an application process for this, and we shouldn't just handpick a few select groups that we've historically given money to. I say, we, we say like, you know, what are we giving out this year? 350,000? So we could say next year, here's a, here's a fund of 350,000. Feed Northland Kids is a great, they would do great, you know, they could do so much work if they got funding from Clay County. But we open it up to any nonprofit that wants to apply, and, you know, then we can decide how it's going to be. But, you know, just because you've always received funding, doesn't mean you're entitled to it, right? So.
I thought I heard a thump. I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson, I think you were seeking recognition.
Thank you. Thought maybe you were throwing something over there. So clarification on, on the first point, talking about NNI and Rebuild KC, that was called, Rebuild KC. I want to clarify, Commissioner Wagner talked about the ship sailing and him jumping in the water. I don't think it needs to get wet quite, quite yet, because I don't think our last meeting, we made a decision on that. I think it was just, hey, let's go back and get some information. Like you said, do they have the projects? Do they have the capacity? That kind of stuff. Because I know I didn't make any decision. I don't think we made a decision to move any money anywhere yet, right?
Correct. The, the funding is still in that line item, and so you're right. The direction was, find out, do they have the capacity? Do they have the projects? I did do a follow-up with them, saying, you know, they have a waiting list of about 30 in Clay County projects, and so I asked kind of where they are, to make sure that they, and so there are some in Kearney, some in Excelsior Springs. So the Rebuild KC has projects sort of throughout the entire county.
So they have projects, and they have the capacity to do it?
Right. And, right, and they've hired, they've hired a new project manager that starts in January, so with their intent of being able to do more projects. Certainly, you can do more projects, not only if you have the management, but if you also have the funding.
But for, for budget purposes, we don't necessarily have to make a decision on this tonight. It's, it's, we can jockey that around.
Right.
And was it February when we?
Yeah, typically, well, once the budget is adopted and we know what's in here, then we reach out to those agencies and work with them on a service agreement. And in that service agreement is, what are they going to do, and how much money is being allocated to them? So, you know, there's, there's more opportunities for that to come before the commission.
Yeah.
On how you want to allocate those funds, and what is the agreement that they're going to do with those funds.
Yeah. Yeah, so the way I interpret that is Commissioner Withington put out this idea, and, but we don't have to decide that right now. We, we'll decide when it comes time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they'll have an opportunity to come back to this commission and, and address that as well, NNI as well as Rebuild KC, right? And, and on a bigger scale, I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody should be committed to any particular organization. I'm certainly not. I, I like them both. They both do great things. I'm not, I don't have any allegiance to either one. I think our allegiance is to the community, and where's our tax dollars best spent? And I think if they can come in and say, hey, we're, we're the place where you want to spend it, and this is the best place to spend it, and this is why, you win, kind of thing. And I also agree with Commissioner Withington's spot, a comment about, it seems like, and I've only been here a year, but it seems like there's a, there's a regular group of people that come back for this funding. Maybe we need to open it up. Is there, either, either open it up to others, is there other people, companies, organizations that would better deserve that, or look at the opposite, is, should we be in this business? You know, some counties don't do this at all. Some counties say, you know what, we're not going to try and pick and choose. You guys are nonprofits, do your own thing, and raise your own funds, and we're going to spend taxpayer money somewhere else. So I think those are, are interesting topics to, to look into as well. On the topic of the EDC, I will just tell you, I'm, I'm very supportive and very disappointed in the, in the EDC, and that's why I, one of the reasons why, two reasons why I made the, the proposal I did last, or yesterday. One, I think that the prosecutor needs another assistant prosecutor. I just think that's really important, and I think, and I explained that yesterday, and I don't think you got to hear that yet, because I don't think you can listen to that.
I think I know.
You'll figure it, yeah, it's not too hard to figure out. But, so I think that's really important, and that's an easy place to get that money. So I think that's, I personally think it's a better use of, for that money right now. However, my disappointment with the EDC is, I really think the EDC has a great opportunity to work even better with this commission, but they don't, and they won't. And they're not working with us, for whatever reason. It's, hey, we want $100,000, but we're going to do things our way, period. And I just don't think that's how we should be working with them. I've had conversations and emails back and forth with, with some of the executive board members about this issue, and, and, and their response was really disheartening as to why, why they don't want to do anything we want to, we want to do. why they don't want to do anything we want to, we want to do. And there's, and I'm gonna read it verbatim, just so that I don't misquote anybody. It says, "Know that we are in the early stages of exploring a relationship with the Platte County EDC, and that no changes were made to our bylaws at this time." So, that's the reason for not wanting to honor our request of, of letting us pick our own representative for the EDC. Which, and I understand why they'd be, why they would care, but if that's their excuse, and I'll be honest, that's, that's not a real good excuse, as there, we all know their bylaws are outdated anyway, they need to be redone. If they're gonna follow their bylaws, then every single one of us would be board members on the EDC, 'cause that's how their bylaws are written. But we've evolved, this commission has evolved, and they were written that way because there's three-member commission before, now we're a seven-member commission. We've evolved, things have changed, and as far as better representation for this commission on, on various boards and commissions, I think is important, and this is one opportunity that we had to do that, which shouldn't have been any concern of theirs at all. I mean, why would they care? You know, hey, we got a spot on the EDC executive board, which by the way, is a board that really makes all the decisions, it's, the, the membership does nothing, even this information that we have about this, this never came to the board, 'cause I'm on the board. Uh, it never came to the board. It's the EDC executive council, commission, whatever they call, they make all those decisions. And they made this decision here, that they're not gonna honor what we've asked them to do. So, I've just been really disappointed in them, I think there's a great opportunity, I think there still may be a great opportunity to work with them in the future, but now it's their turn to, to reach out and maybe try and make something work, if they want to do that. The last I heard from them, and they didn't, they said, this is what we're doing, and we understand, we might lose your money, oh well. Um, well, oh well, that's what's gonna happen right now, and if, if things change in the future, that's fine, but if, if they, if things do change in the future, my thought is, well, it can only change if we can find more money, and that they want to work with us, of course, but, but right now, I just think it's more important that that assistant prosecutor's in place. And we talk about economic development. Economic development isn't just giving a hundred thousand dollars to some organization and say, we're part of economic development. Economic development, as far as I think we're concerned as policymakers, goes into a lot of their, a lot of other avenues. Public safety being, I think, the major one. Matter of fact, for those of us who sit on the, on the world's negotiating team, that's one of the things that we argue, hey, look at the safety that you have here, look at the safety that you have in Clay County. That's a big argument for bringing businesses and economic development to this county. You know, we, we put, you know, money into a, into a new, into Megan back there in the corner, when it comes to tourism. You know, bringing more tourists in here brings more businesses to this county as well. And there's so many things we could, we could talk about that have to do with economic development. To say that we're out of economic development, I don't want to say that, we're not, we're completely in economic development for this county. It's just not a matter of simply give a hundred thousand dollars to a, an organization that doesn't want, want to work with us. And I think there's a big opportunity there, and I think they've really squandered that opportunity, and I'm very disappointed because I really think that relationship should be there, but I don't see the alternative, and I think this is just the best route to go with that hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where I'm with it. Thanks.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to observe is that when we have these discussions up here, we set up expectations. For instance, when we're talking about money, moving money in either of the, these two instances, we now have, there is an expectation in all of those agencies we just discussed. So, if we go forward with what we, what was proposed by Commissioner Withington, that's one thing, but if we should decide to go another direction, it feels a little like that they're building on sand. I think, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we should bear in mind that what we say, and when we talk about moving specific amounts of money, people are listening, and whether we mean that to be an absolute thing or not, there's an expectation, just say for the sake of argument, if the money was moved from, to, back to where it was, in the case of Build KC and NNI, say we decide, no, that's not such a good idea, there's already kind of an expectation, in my mind, and I think we should just, I'm not saying we shouldn't discuss it, I'm just saying, we should, we should probably try to remain cognizant of what we're saying. Commissioner, I think you wanted to respond. Oops, I'm sorry, hold on, let me get back here. Doggone. I'm trying to hit, there we go, I got you now.
You got it. My fingers are just too fast. Yeah, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with that, but I, the problem is, we have to discuss things in open, and we have to be transparent about it. So, so the, what Commissioner Withington brought up regarding the NNI and, and Rebuild KC, although it certainly could cause some consternation amongst those two groups, or one in particular, it has to be discussed in, in open, but I think it, it needs to be clear that, hey, this is, this hasn't been decided on, this is not a budget thing that we voted on, and hey, this is where this money's going, we're, we're still in discussions about that. I'm seeing head nods around, so we're still in discussions about that. So, that's not a done deal, and hopefully, hopefully we're clear on that, and, and NNI and, and Rebuild KC know that. EDC is a different animal. There, we're looking to move money, and I've requested the movement of that money from one category, and it, it doesn't move back. Once it goes there, we hire an assistant prosecutor, that's a permanent position, that we will be funding every year with that money. So, if, if by chance, we want to work with the EDC in the future, and they want more money with us, by the way, the fact that they need money to work with us, they're not, we don't have to have both, we can work with them without giving them money, but nonetheless, money is a part of what they want. And if they want that, we'll have to find that, again, somewhere else in the budget, and I don't think it's gonna be impossible to do, but that's something we'll have to do. And, so that, to your point, Jerry, that's a big deal. And that's certainly what I am proposing, and I think what a majority of us that were here yesterday, anyway, agree, I know we're missing a couple yesterday, but we agreed upon, and, and I, again, for all those reasons, there's a lot more detail, and we've talked about it in the past, we don't need to rehash all of it, but I think it's, it's, there's good reason for it, and that's...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, my point was, and you'd mentioned, they were, these were two different animals, so to speak. That in and of itself, because they were discussed in similar circumstances, creates a level of confusion that I, I think we should, I, what I'm saying is, we should strive to, make sure that we are communicating as clearly as possible, and that if we're talking about apples and oranges, to use a metaphor, of, of what I believe you're trying to say, that does, that does not always get communicated in a way that we would think it would, so that's why I would counsel caution in, in, in the conversations we have, as far as when we take it away, because you're right, once that money is, there's now an expectation with the prosecutor's office, that money will now be there. And, it, it, you know, it sounds like that's, from your description, it sounds like a done deal, it's not a proposal, it's, it will happen, obviously contingent on the vote. But, that is, that was kind of my point, was, we, we need to be just cognizant of what we're saying, and try to strive for the most clarity as possible.
Sure, I agree. And hopefully they're watching, NNI, Rebuild KC, and, and EDC are all watching this, or will watch this in the future, and hopefully it's pretty clear. But, yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you were seeking recognition, and hold on, let me, I don't know what my problem is, I'm pushing. All right, so now it's, now it's paying attention to me, so you may proceed.
Uh, thank you, sir. So, I, I agree that these are two separate, and you know, they're both outside agencies, but it's two separate conversations, I think. The, the smaller amount is the twenty, is the twenty-two thousand five that was envisioned changing within NNI. You know, I've, I've talked with Commissioner Withington about this, uh, over the years, you know, I, I've committed to the folks at NNI, that I would support getting them the, the full funding request, and so that would be what I would support. I do think that when it comes to this issue of, of home repairs, I think it's an example of good targeted help for people who need it. I think that rebuilding together Kansas City does great work in that regard, I think NNI does great work in that regard, and I think that they, they both have pretty strong sort of vetting programs to make sure that it's getting to, to the folks who need it the most. And so, you know, to me, this is, on, on that, uh, conversation has just opened up the possibility of, you know, can, can we just figure out how to, how to do both? Fund NNI and rebuilding together KC at a slightly higher amount, obviously, that would mean finding the twenty-two five, which, you know, is not without challenge, but I, if, if it were deemed feasible, personally, I would be thrilled to have even more investment going toward that exact endeavor. I think it's often folks who are struggling financially, or with their health, or both, often, it's folks often who are seniors, or people with disabilities, it's veterans, and it makes a life-changing difference every time one of those home investments gets made for one of those people or families. And so, my view on it is, if we can do both, and spend a little more money on that exact thing, I think that would be great. And, yeah, that's all, I think. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Johnson, I appreciate that explanation because I, I had to go do a review of one of my subordinates, and so I couldn't quite catch the end, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. I, I will say, I'm somewhat in, in the, in the same boat as Commissioner Carpenter, in that, at the end of the day, these, if I were to take twenty-two thousand dollars, that's two roofs, or it could be six HVAC systems, or maybe four, depending on the size, and I kind of think, well, can we come up with enough money to do two more roofs, or a few more HVAC systems, so long as those addresses are outside, outside Kansas City, outside Gladstone, right? So, I, I'll just make that pitch for that, for that reason. I, I, I do want to reflect back on the, the comments regarding EDC, and, and, and I think I understand the, well, I'm pretty sure I understand the assisting, assistant prosecuting attorney, I, I agree, the more that you have, the more you get into public safety, and we want that. I, I guess at the end of the day, the, what strikes me with, with those comments was, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to buy something, and I think it's elusive to know what we're buying with, with that one hundred thousand, with the EDC, and I may be projecting here, but it strikes me with everything else, you kind of know what you're getting. And, and I guess that's why I made my comment regarding, you know, what is this strategic plan? Because at that point, it's, there's something, maybe we're interested in it, maybe we're not, whatever the case may be. And, and as we've talked about earlier, in, in earlier discussions regarding budget, the ability to, to put those placeholders in our budget, but that's not a commitment, suggests to me that, if you entertain the idea for a moment that you could have that placeholder, we could wait and see what that strategic plan suggests, and if we're not buying it, money moves over somewhere else, or it's a lesser amount, or it's something else. I, I just note that there, there are some options, and, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll close simply by saying, you know, I, I share the same disappointments that all of you share, and we've, and we've had this discussion for quite a while, and, and I don't know, I don't know if the well is just poisoned because of all that history, and someone's waiting for someone else to do something, and, and maybe when you play that kind of game, everybody loses, you know, really move forward in any fashion. But I will at least throw out that idea that perhaps as we, as, as you have, administrator, tried to reach out to get answers to the questions. To me, the question I have related to the EDC is simply, what's the plan? And do we have to wait until January to get it? Or can we have it now, and know what potentially we may be buying, and I think that can be helpful? And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, I would say, I believe that the EDC's strategic plan is done, because they presented it at the meeting, the luncheon that commissioners were at just recently, at a high level.
The one I missed, yeah.
Yeah, but at a high level, so I'm, certainly could reach out to them, and see if they have a document that they could share with the commission.
Maybe that's helpful, maybe it's not, it would be helpful for me, but that's... Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, you know, I'll do the EDC first. I was surprised when they came, after we tried to add another person, and it wasn't the person they wanted. And they came in, and, and we asked them pointedly, would you allow, you know, what we want you to get, put another person on the board? I thought that the arrogance, and the indifference, and the fact that they said, well, we don't care, if you, if you don't want to give us all the money, that's okay with us. I mean, there wasn't anything to say, you know, we're gonna try to work with you, or whatever. I think we'd be wise at this point in time, because they're looking at Platte County, and whether or not Platte County becomes a part of them, it's just, if it does, it's going to be pretty darn contentious when a big company comes up, and they're looking at whether they go in Platte County, or they go in Clay, they're together as one unit, and they're both fighting internally, saying, I want it, no, I want it, and, and who, who's gonna win? So, I think if they do not join together, if they stay Clay County, EDC only, if they were willing to allow another person on the board, I still cannot understand, they said they would allow it, it was good if it was Scott, and Scott's a great choice, but then, when we threw another name out there, immediately, no, we can't change. It was so obvious, and such a slap in the face, as far as I'm concerned, that, that I, whole, at this point in time, I say, keep our money in the prosecutor's office for right now. After things change, and maybe Platte County doesn't become a part, they want to come back, make a proposal to us, and give us their new plan of attack, I'd like to, one thing I would like from them, I would like them to tell me, in the last, I'll just go three years, I won't go back too far, in the last three years, tell me the businesses that you, just EDC, don't talk about KC, ADC, and all of that other, tell me what businesses you have brought to Clay County. How many jobs have you brought to Clay County? How many businesses? And, and I want to see that, too. I think that they need to be accountable for us, for the money we're putting out. This isn't our money, it's the taxpayers' money. So, I feel like, you know, let's, let's be frugal when we do that, and if they can come back and make some adjustments in their thinking, they can make some adjustments in what they have done, I'd love to see what they've done. Then, you know, we can reevaluate after the first quarter or something, but for now, I think trying to do this the way we're doing it, I, I don't see any, any value in that. On the other deal, if we were taking more money away from them, say we were gonna, we said, we're gonna take that twenty-some thousand dollars away from them, and we're gonna give it to something that had no relevance to what they do, then I, I would have to fight tooth and toenail to leave it where it is. But actually, they ought to be, I'm surprised that this has been such a big punch in the face to them. That, that's such a small amount of money, in the amount of money that they get. I say, I think that they'd say, okay, we can partner together, let's partner together and make this happen for Kansas City North, for Clay County, what can we do to work together as a team? And I, I just don't see that it's a really big deal, but I think here, again, you know, maybe, once we talk to, we can talk it out a little bit more, look a little bit more in-depth at, at the Build KC, and look at them, and then talk about it some, but at this point in time, I don't see why it's that big of a deal, I really don't. I don't want, I like, NNI's been good to me, and, and I admire what they do, and, and if they were on a shoestring, say they only had a hundred thousand dollars in their budget, man, I wouldn't allow you to take anything from them. But they're pretty cash-rich, and this little lousy bit of money that's gonna go help a newer organization, I, I hate that it's caused all this uproar with them. So, maybe we evaluate a little bit more before we do a final situation, but for right now, I don't see why it's, it's such a big deal.
Okay. I, I think one of the points that Commissioner Wagner was trying to make is, and I don't know the situation with Build KC, but with NNI, they use this to pull down, so that roughly, just under twenty-five thousand dollars really translates into more like seventy-five thousand dollars, that they'd have to work with. Yeah, because they're matching funds, they're pulling down additional monies, so that kind of reduction has a multiplier factor, and I think that might have been one of the points that Commissioner Wagner was trying to make. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to, I see this over and over again, it just frustrates me so much, and this is part of my frustration with EDC. Commissioner Lawson just talked... me so much. And this is part of my frustration with EDC. Commissioner Lawson just talked about, hey, you know, why can't the EDC tell us, or she'd like to hear from the EDC, you know, what have they done for us business-wise? What businesses have they brought to the county? You know, Commissioner Wagner talked about, you know, where's the EDC? Maybe we need to ask the EDC where they are with the strategic plan. You know, we've had questions, why don't we ask the EDC what they're doing with the 100K that we give them every year? And we tell the county Administrator, you know, contact the EDC, and sometimes she'll contact the EDC and Executive Council, and have someone from the Executive Council come down here to get us all these answers. He's right there. That's our representative who's on the Executive Council. And I don't mean to throw stones and embarrass anybody, but this is my frustration. Why does she have to call someone down to the Executive Council when he's sitting right there? That's our representation. We should all say, "Where are we with the business plan? Where are we with the strategic plan? What businesses have we brought? What have you done with the 100K?" He's the one that makes those decisions. He's the one of five that are on that council, on that executive committee. That's my frustration. That's the whole purpose of why we want somebody there. That's why I'm so frustrated with this setup. And that's why I think we have a problem here. She doesn't need to call anybody. He's right here. He's right here. And Jerry, really, I don't mean to offend you on this, but that is the frustration that I have. Why do we need to go to them, have them bring somebody down here to tell us every meeting that you've sat in on, or should have, anyway? And you're the decision-maker. You're one of those people who decides what happens with that 100K. You're one of those people that decides the strategic plan, and the finalizing of the strategic plan. You're one of those people that should know what EDC does. You know. We've had other people who have been on the membership, and I've been for two meetings now, really, there's nothing that we do, and these two probably contested as well, they don't make any decisions. The decisions are made at the executive level. Our representative at the executive level does not have that information for us. And we have to go back to the other people on that board, executive level. And that's what just frustrates me so much, and I hate to have to call this out in public like this, but I've been saying this over and over again, this is our problem, and this is why we don't have that relationship with the EDC that we have, and why we're not getting the information that we have. Our EDC executive is right here. He's one of us. We shouldn't have to go to anybody. We shouldn't have to call anybody. Ask them.
You're totally right, Commissioner. Ask me. I don't get very many questions. People don't...
You heard them ask.
I think the questions I get, the questions I, the questions I get are generally going to be in public, in a public meeting, and there's a degree of, if you really want a discussion, I'd be happy to sit down with anybody on this panel, have a cup of coffee, and tell you everything that I can possibly come up with. But the only time I'm asked these questions is in public, and it's generally, there's an edge to it. And so I'm willing to sit down and talk to anybody about this stuff. But, you know, one of the beauties, one of the great things about this seven commission, seven-member commission is, we can talk. We can sit down together, call me. Call me, talk to me. I'd be happy to meet with anybody on this commission, and tell them whatever it is I can say, whatever it is I know. But generally, I don't get questions or any comments unless it's in a public forum with the cameras going.
You don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. There you go. Now you're on.
So, but that response is, "Hey, you want us to come draw information out of you?" That's not what I want from our representative. When that strategic plan is finalized by the EDC, you should have come to this board publicly and said, "Hey, EDC has finalized their strategic plan." When we have questions about EDC, and he's, we're asking Diana to go back to the EDC, you know the answers, or you should, why don't you tell us the answers? I mean, it's like, why do we have to play this? And we're not asking, nobody's, nothing was asked with an edge to it. They weren't even asked to you. It was asked, "Hey, we need to go back to find out where they are with their strategic plan. We need to find out, what businesses have they brought to the community? What have they done with the $100,000 we gave them the last several years, each year?" Things like that, that you're making the decisions on. And that's the whole purpose of having a representative from this commission on the EDC Executive Board, so you can be that link, you can bridge that link. So we can be a team with the Executive Board, because we're not going to bring the whole Executive Board down here. But you can be that bridge for that team, so that we can work with them. And that's not happening. And that's where my frustration is. I shouldn't have to go have a private meeting with you, without the cameras here, and without the public knowing, "Hey, what happened to the EDC Executive Board? You know, where are you with the strategic plan? You know, what did you do with the 100K that we gave you?" Everybody should know that. And you should be willing to just tell that, and not have us try to extrapolate that from you, you know, when we get frustrated because we're not getting information. That's really my frustration with it, Jerry. I think this needs to be our representative, needs to be someone who understands, say, "You're the go-between us and EDC. Us board members, we don't have anything. We rarely meet with them, we don't get any information. It's the Executive Board who does. You are a representative there. We get nothing back from you. We get frustrated, we don't know what the EDC is doing," which is exactly your job, I think, to let us know what the EDC is doing. And it's just really frustrating. And the response is, "Hey, you got to come ask me questions in private?" No. That's not how it should work. That's not how government should work. That's not how the transparency should be, and the forthrightness should be in government. That's exactly what most of us campaigned against. "Hey, we got a decision from the EDC, bring it forward. You on the EDC decided what you were going to do with the $100,000 you spent." I would be excited to come back and say, "Hey, listen, this is what we did with the $100,000 of our taxpayers. This is what we did with the EDC. This is how we're moving this county forward as far as economic development." There should be things, it's a bragging time for you, and for the EDC, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not hearing that. And that's what just frustrates me beyond all measures, because why is that not happening? And I'm just frustrated. I just don't agree that we should have to come to you in private and ask you those questions. I get that, you know, we shouldn't ask questions, you know, edgy, trying to catch you on camera in public. We should never have to ask the question.
That happens occasionally, yes.
Sure it does. It happens both ways. Let's face it. I mean, that's just how it works. But everyone's trying to one-up each other. But, you know, if we're working together, and we're trying to, and you represent the EDC, and you're bringing that information to us, we shouldn't even have those questions. You know, we should know what's going on. And quite frankly, this entire board, all seven of us, should be cheerleaders for the EDC, because we should love the EDC. But we don't, because we don't have that information. And right now, there's just red flags that go up, so far, with the EDC. What happened in July, I just described what happened earlier in the year with the EDC. There's red flags with that. To me, there's a red flag, that they do not want to, at all, at all, let us have a chance to select our own representative on that EDC Executive Board. They don't want us to do that. That's a red flag to me. Makes no sense. Why would they care? That's a huge red flag. When I start seeing these red flags, that concerns me. And that's when I start asking questions. And that's when they, you came with a plan, that the EDC apparently approved, Executive Board approved, about adding a second Commissioner to the EDC Board, and that it was going to be the Mayor Pro Tem, or the Commissioner, you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you mean.
Which you select. To me, that was a red flag. It's a red flag to all of us. Why doesn't the Commission decide? There's seven of us now. I get, you came from, and you three came from a time when it was just three. It was a different, and even before these two, it was a different dynamic for you. I totally understand that. We're not there anymore. There's seven of us. We should be a team. We should be able to make selections as a team, make, choose, hey, who do we think amongst us? And even with that plan before, maybe Scott was the best selection. But we should be able to decide that. And that's really where the red flag came up then. And when we wanted to decide that, and the EDC completely shut that down, and said, "No, you're not getting a second person," that's another red flag. And when we want to decide, hey, who represents on the EDC, and they say, "No, we'll decide that," that's a red flag. And then when they gave excuses, like, "Well, we just want to change our bylaws," outdated bylaws, that need to be changed anyways, that's a red flag. It just makes no sense. I want to be partners with them. They don't really want to be partners, and I don't know why. That's a red flag. So that's just my concern, and that's where, you know, I'm not losing any sleep over them if they don't want to work with us. I mean, fine, we'll move on. I actually am happy about another Assistant Prosecutor, because I think that's very important. He asked, I don't know if you know Scott, the Prosecutor actually asked for two Assistant Prosecutors and two support personnel in his budget request. We only gave him one of each. So that's why I thought it was important to give him a second one. Nonetheless, so those are my thoughts. And again, I don't mean to badger you, Jerry, but I know I'm badgering you. The fact is...
That's okay. That's what we all signed up for.
Yeah, you got tough skin. It's not your first realtor, I know. But that's my frustration. And it doesn't have to be like that. It shouldn't be like that. And I think I've said enough, but you know where I'm at.
I do want to thank you, though, because you were one of the Commissioners who shows up, even at the board meetings and the rest of it. So certainly, thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that. However, I will say, I can understand why some board members wouldn't show up. Because really, everything's made at the Executive Council level. All decisions are made. The board members are really not making decisions. There's good reasons for having that group of people there, but they're not decision-makers, at least my experience so far. I will still continue to be there as long as they let me there. They may end up changing their bylaws now, and keep kicking us all off, who knows. But I will certainly still be there, and I appreciate that. But I could see the frustration with other board members, because the decisions are all made at the executive level. And if that's the case, that's fine if that's how they want to do it. We need someone on the executive level that we can choose, that represents us, and that we're getting information from. And that's really my concern. But thank you, Jerry.
Well, certainly, if there is a merger between the two organizations, clearly, we're talking about an organization that would not survive in its present form. If that merger goes forward, the Clay County EDC, and for that matter, the Platte County EDC, will cease to exist. Their bylaws will be gone, and then there will be new bylaws written from whatever that successor organization is, assuming that that goes forward. And I think that's something of an assumption. But I know that you probably realize that would be the process, but I just thought I would say it out loud.
Well, just for the record, the bylaw change that would have to take place is probably about a three or four-word change to their bylaws, and just a vote by the membership, which is, you know, probably five minutes max to do all of that, change the words, and get a vote. So it's not like it's a big process for them to go through for this. It's not a big deal. It's not a big change to their bylaws. They need to fix the bylaws, so not all of us are on the membership, the general membership board. Only three of us are, actually. And that the EDC Executive Board is not the Presiding Commissioner, but it's a Commissioner selected by the entire commission. That's an easy fix. Like I said, five, 10 minutes, it's done. If they need help, I can help them. But it's really not a big, it's an excuse. Let's face it, it's an excuse. And to me, that's a red flag. Those excuses are a red flag. If they want to work with us, they'll make it happen. I just, I wish they would have told me the real reason why, and I just don't think I'm getting the honest response why. But anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington, I'm sorry, we are just not getting to you, but you are recognized.
I just want to say, I haven't been to the board meetings, because I don't get the invites. Commissioner Johnson called me last time and said, "Hey, you on this?" And I said, "They'd get an email. They won't invite me to the meetings."
I didn't either.
And Joanne didn't either, so. And they, I did reach out to them, and told them I wasn't getting the invites. I'd never heard back from them. But I do want to just, I'm not going to say as much as Jay, but I share those same frustrations. And the thing that really pisses me off the most, though, is when Dave Slater was here, we asked those questions to Dave, and Dave's answer was, "Jerry has all that information. Jerry can share it with you." If they're going to tell us publicly that you can share it with us, how many times have you sent an email to Diana and asked Diana to distribute it to the entire commission? You could have, it wouldn't take you that much, it's not that hard, Jerry. We shouldn't have to come to you and beg for information. So I would like to see you send out a monthly email to Diana, and she can distribute it, giving us an update. Commissioner Lawson's even asked you previously, should we, do you want us to schedule an executive session so where you can give us updates? I never, I haven't seen you schedule an executive session to give us updates on the EDC. So there's ways that you can give us information. We shouldn't have to come to you and beg, just like yesterday, when I brought up the vote at Mark. You should be sharing those votes from the Mid-America Regional Council. I shouldn't find out from people calling me, saying, "Is it really the Clay County Commission's policy that you guys don't want funding for senior citizens on the KCATA?" I shouldn't be finding that out from them. I should find that out from you. So you should be sending us regular updates on the EDC. And maybe we wouldn't have been in this position had we not had those frustrations. I think sometimes you keep information from us, because you like to control things. So I know the ship sailed probably on the EDC, but if they want to come back and work with us, I would be open to that. But we need to pick who's going to be on our Executive Board. I know I've told you before, you can't serve this commission and the EDC. You have to pick one. And if you're going to be the county's representative on the EDC's Executive Board, you need to represent this commission on that Executive Board. You should have been fighting for us to have a say on that bylaw change, not abstaining because you didn't agree with it. You should have been representing this commission's policy or decision, whether you agreed with it or not. You need to pick, if you're going to represent us, or you're going to represent the EDC. So that's where, that's the last thing I'm going to say. But that's, I had the same frustrations that Jay had.
I believe there were some. I don't, I'm trying to remember, because I do ask the Administrator, and she always does it when I ask her to, forward information on various things. So I couldn't go, without going back and checking all the emails, I couldn't, you know, there are a lot of emails that I sent, and then that...
Well, so that was a rhetorical question, right? Like, I wasn't looking for an exact answer. I was basically saying, "You've done this before. It would be so easy for you to type up an email and just give us something."
No, you said, "I never do it," and now you're saying...
No, I said, "How many times have you..."
Oh, I got you. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I misunderstood.
Yeah.
All right, further discussion. Seeing none. Commissioner, excuse me, Administrator, do you have any summation you'd like to make? Sorry about that. Didn't mean to demote you.
No, no, fine, fine.
Didn't mean to demote you.
So, again, the last piece, and this is really sort of the public hearing presentation, so you're going to hear this, you know, in two weeks. But I also want to stress that we try to engage the public in the budget process. And so all the presentations not only have been on YouTube, but also on our website. We also have all the PowerPoints on our website, under the Budget Process. You know, we've tried to put some things out on Facebook, and certainly, we have an email if people have had questions about the budget. So we really want our public to be engaged in the budget process. So with that being said, and I don't want to belabor your discussions, but I heard a couple of Commissioners suggest, is there a way to find the 22-5, right, so that giving more to, you know, rebuild KC, and the same amount to NNI? Is that an interest of the Commission, that you want me to look for something? Now, between now, when you adopt the budget, and the time that we bring agencies forward, we may have some funding that is currently in the budget that may not be needed, and we'll know that in January. And so there could be some funding that could be easily moved, if that's a desire of the Commission. So I just throw that out, because I heard there was some interest about trying to keep both whole, well, one whole, and one adding more funding to. So I just, is there any direction for staff that you would like for us to take?
Commissioner Withington, I think you're seeking recognition.
Yeah, if that's possible, I would like to, you know, rebuilding KC has demonstrated that there is a need, that, I mean, they have a waiting list, plus, they do work outside of Kansas City, that, you know, more than NNI. So if we can find it, I would like that. But I would also like the application process for next year.
Certainly. You know, we had something similar, once I got here, with regard to ARPA funding.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if that is a direction of the Commission, and we'll talk more about that, as we kick off the '25 budget process early on. And so, you know, we can put a process together for you all to consider, that's what you want to do, and open it up to more agencies, and then, you know, have you all, you know, sort of allocate the funds, in fairness, to those agencies that have historically been used to getting funds from us. You know, if the county's going to change that process, it would be nice to let them know. Because I don't know if they're on the calendar year for their fiscal year, or if they're on October 1, or something. So, you know, probably this will deem more discussion by the Commission, and we'll put it on as a discussion item early on in the year, if that's the Commission's desire.
Perhaps it would be a thought to expand on Commissioner Withington's request, and get, and I don't know if we've already gotten the information, because I don't have their packet in front of me, but to get an idea of how much NNI does outside of the Kansas City city limits. Because I know they do stuff in Gladstone. I know that, and I'm pretty, and I've seen them do stuff in Liberty.
We know that they do, because they do submit a report to us. And then per the service agreement, they are required by this commission to do a certain percentage outside of the Kansas City metropolitan area. And so we get that, I believe in their report, and we just got a report from them just recently.
So, when I say Kansas City, I would also like to see them do more outside of Gladstone with the county money. They have a professional service agreement with Gladstone. They receive funding from Gladstone. So they're going to do, they're going to do the homes in Glad... And see, that's where I go back to the, what Auditor Holbert pointed out yesterday about the state audit finding, because they tell us that they do homes in Gladstone. But then, we know that they receive money from Gladstone, and they have a professional service agreement with Gladstone. So whether they get money from us or not, they're still going to be doing home repairs in Gladstone. So when I say Kansas City, I should also say Gladstone. Like, I want to see them in Liberty. I know they do a few. They just did a home in, one home in Carney, maybe one home in Smithville. But I would like to see that money spread more equitably into other areas that don't, are... other areas that don't already pay NNI money.
Well, speaking as someone who lives in Gladstone, please don't lump Gladstone and Kansas City together. It's not, uh, it's, it's not something that we would necessarily, that not every citizen in Gladstone would relish.
Well, what I said was Gladstone and Kansas City.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, anything else? I mean, do you, do you feel you, uh, you have the request, the information you need, Commissioner? I mean, second off, although, uh, you know, Commissioner Withington, I've been discussing it, we did, I did not really solicit a, a consensus from the commission, which I think I would like to do. Commissioner, would you restate what you are asking for, and then we will check and see if there's a consensus for that to go forward?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask that if, if you can find the twenty, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand in the budget, that we allocate that additional funding to rebuild KC.
Right, um, so I may not have that allocated by the time that we do the public hearing budget, but as I've indicated, um, there is the possibility that we will know after the budget is adopted in January, if there is an item that is budgeted that won't be necessary, and the commission can then reallocate those funds.
Okay.
And that will happen before we have conversations with all the agencies about their service agreements.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, Commissioner, are you recommending that that money that was recommended to be put in addition to the doubling of KC, um, build KC's budget be found elsewhere and that the NNI budget not be impacted, is, or, or am I mistaken? I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to be.
So, so, so ideally, I would like to be equitable, right? I'd like to see them both fifty-fifty, but if that's not the will of the commission, which I'm willing to be a team player, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a hill I'm going to go die on, all right, like, I'm going to, it's not that big of a deal to me, I was just trying to be equitable, you know, and split it, but, so if, if we can be equitable and split it fifty-fifty, that'd be great, if that's not the will of the commission and they can find money, I would like her to, to find that money and then include that as an addition to what we're proposing for rebuild.
So, in essence, um, NNI would remain as requested, and we would add additional funds to the request of rebuilding KC.
Yeah, if that's what the commission.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, was, was something that's succinct.
Yeah, yeah, if that's what the commission wants, I'm fine with that.
Okay, uh, I'll just go around, look for head nods, is every, and if anyone wants to comment, certainly feel free, um, is that, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Johnson, uh, you would like to make comment?
Yeah, I'm all for checking the seat cushions and see if we can find some more money somewhere, but I, I don't want to commit right now to, we're not committing to where that money's going yet, right? Because there's some questions, like, so before it was going to be a split, so, if we're going to try and make it even, then it's going to be a lot more than twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, so this would just be the twenty-two thousand that I had thrown out yesterday, so.
Um, yeah, I'm all for looking for it and coming back later, and like I said, this isn't a budget issue right now, we can talk about it come months, sure.
So I believe we have con- consensus, and do you feel you have the information you need?
I do, thank you very much.
All right, uh, anything else you'd like to add as we round off this conversation? Thank you very much, because it's getting late. Very well, that concludes our discussion, if no other commissioners have comment. Um, that brings us to county administrator comments, administrator?
Um, yes, just a couple items, um, county offices will be closed Monday in observance of Christmas Day, and also close the following Monday, which is New Year's Day, um, there is no commission meeting scheduled for next week, and so the next meeting of the commission will be January fourth, six o'clock, first meeting of the year. On behalf of staff, we certainly want to wish, um, citizens and the commission a Merry Christmas and safe and happy new year.
Thank you, I'm going to start with my far right and work across. Um, Commissioner Withington, do you have any comments you'd care to make at this moment?
Uh, just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and, um, uh, I hope that we're able to let staff go home early tomorrow, so they can start their holiday early, I know Jackson County's closing down for the day, so hopefully we can shut down a little early and let, uh, let the workers go home and enjoy the holiday, so Merry Christmas, everyone.
Commissioner Lawson?
Uh, yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody, uh, hope you guys have a blessed and wonderful holiday. Um, a couple of things I just want to say real quick, now this is the last meeting, I just want to say, think about all the stuff in one year that this group has accomplished. I, I mean, I'm really proud to be a part of it, sincerely, the number one thing we did was we got prayer in this place before our meetings, and I think that was, God knows we need the prayers, so I was thankful as I could be that that was done. We got a change on the planning and zoning stuff, so that it makes it a little smoother for the people to go through the process, that used to take forever and a day, so I was really excited that we were able to get that done. We got our nine-one-one, that helps with the money, maybe it brings some of that money over for what you want to do. Uh, we got SB one ninety, which some of us weren't happy about, but I'm really pleased that we got that done, so many people have called and said, we're so grateful, um, and, uh, then we sent our request to Jeff City to see if we can have the ability to make corrections, uh, when people feel that they've not been treated fairly on, on their taxes and they've paid late, and we can make adjustments. So with all of that that we've done, I think we've, we've had a hell of a year, some good, some bad, but God bless you all and hope you have a wonderful holiday.
Commissioner Wagner?
Who? There you go. Thank you, uh, well, first, I have to say, I never thought I'd live to see the day that Commissioner Withington would say Clay County should emulate anything, uh, done in Jackson County, so I, I, I at least have to point that out. I couldn't resist, I couldn't resist.
Oh, my God.
Um, uh, no, I, and, and I, I do appreciate, um, Commissioner Lawson talk about our, uh, achievements, because there are, they are many, um, and I'll just simply say, you know, th- this is our first year, we're done, right? Uh, for this year, um, and it wasn't without its bumps and bruises, but it also had great things, uh, that occurred as well, um, and I look forward to next year, uh, having even more success, and look forward to that opportunity. Uh, otherwise, uh, to my colleagues and to the staff, thank you, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, yeah, no, I, uh, would echo, uh, Commissioner Lawson's, uh, celebration of the year, I think it's been a great, uh, year, um, and glad to have done it with y'all, um, and want to wish everybody happy holidays and specifically a Merry Christmas, it is, uh, the greatest, most magical of all the holidays, Christmas, and, uh, hope you all enjoy it with your families and have a nice time.
Commissioner Thompson?
I guess I will, I'll chime in, I've been very quiet over here, so, um, I will wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well, and I'm also in favor of letting everyone go home a little early tomorrow, because we all know, we all got some presents to wrap and things to cook and bake, so, I don't know if my, my opinion is.
Commissioner Johnson?
Do you want to go first? Yeah, so I'll, I'll be the Scrooge, um, and I appreciate that, and I would love to let all our staff off early tomorrow afternoon, but as you all know, it is tax season, and we have very few days left in which our residents can come in and take the opportunity to pay their taxes. So, we will be open tomorrow, yes, we know we will be down to skeleton crews in all the offices for those that want to take off, um, but again, we will be here to help and serve the public, uh, and help them pay their taxes, but, um, yes, for those who need to take off to wrap presents, I'm, I'm sure they've always put, already put, and bake, they will put in that request, but the courthouse will be open, um, to serve the public.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, so, I want to echo the comments by Commissioner Lawson, you know, this is the end of our first year, and, uh, most of us got into politics because we wanted to make a difference, and I think we made some big differences this year, we, we, we made a lot of changes. With that, I want to thank, uh, my senior colleagues here, the three that were here before us, uh, Jerry, John, and Megan, if I can call them by the first names here, as well as our, our county administrator, our counselor, and all the departments out here, because the four of us came on and really upset the apple cart. I get it, we turned your world upside down, and you guys had to make some serious changes, um, everything from the physical changes to this, to this room, to, uh, uh, all the changes, and, and you know better than us what, what you guys went through this last year with the four of us bulls in the china shop here, uh, trying to figure out what it means to be a politi-, at least three of us trying to figure out what it means to be a politician, one's kind of a little more seasoned than the rest of us.
I'm still trying to figure it out, so don't worry about it.
But, uh, but anyways, thank you for your patience and indulgence and for helping us, uh, come along through this first year, but I think it's been a pretty productive first year all in all, and I appreciate that. Um, I also too want to express my, uh, or say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, and to those who do not celebrate Christmas, uh, happy holidays and, and I hope you enjoy whatever it is that you do celebrate, if you don't celebrate anything, enjoy the time off, uh, but, uh, but thank you, everybody, I appreciate, I appreciate this past year, thank you.
I thought for sure you were going to go into the Festivus thing. I also want to join my colleagues in saying Merry Christmas, uh, to, to everyone, um, obviously, one of the things we have to be thankful for is a great staff, um, we have a wonderful mix of newer people and we, and we have some, uh, seasoned veterans, and, uh, I'm, I'm very happy to be part of this government, um, I saw you guys exchanging glances there. Um, I also want to, I want to say thank you to our, uh, our commission, uh, and Merry Christmas, because, uh, this year has, as I think has been observed, has had some bumps in it, but this is a learning experience for everybody, and we are all kind of, uh, whether we are, uh, have been in politics for some time or whether we are, are now new to it, um, we are all new to a seven-person commission board, so in that sense, we are all rather leveled up to some degree. Uh, something that, uh, that occurred to me, uh, early on when I started serving as commissioner, uh, and I, I used to say it a lot, I, I've just kind of gotten out of the habit of it, but I'll go ahead and say it, uh, at this point, and that is this, um, we need to, to, I think, find it in our hearts to forgive each other occasionally, I think, uh, we are all prone to error, and we are all prone to, uh, not, not operating at the level we would want to.